This legislature has called back to session. Speaker Blas, you're recognized on Bill 167-38.
Good morning, Mr. Speaker and to my colleagues. Speaker, I move to Bill, motion to move Bill 167-38 COR, which is an act to amend subsection 3470F and 3470I of Chapter 34, Title IX Guam Code annotated, relative to increasing penalties for graffiti violations on public and private property, to the third reading, and I'd like the opportunity to speak on it.
You can continue.
Thank you very much, sir. You know, Mr. Speaker, on the way down here from my house in Baragata, I counted forty-eight places, forty-eight different areas that were marked by graffiti, you know, from a stretch of road. And I was, that was only on one stretch of road, basically Route Eight. Forty-eight. And I can imagine that if, obviously, if I lived a little bit further, that number would be considerably more. My point is, you know, Mr. Speaker, we have currently legislation that basically helps to, hopes to address the graffiti problem that we have here. I just came earlier this morning from a tourism conference being held at the Sand Castle. And one of the most notable things that I heard and in discussions that I had with people is basically, in our attempt to be able to boost our tourism, one of the areas that we need to really or focus on is the beautification of our island. And graffiti came up in almost every conversation. And so what this bill provides is the ability to be able to increase the penalties for a, the offense of basically graffiti from what is now basically about $1,000 for the first offense and $2,500 for each subsequent offense, bringing it up to now $2,000 for the first offense, $4,000 for the, for subsequent offense. But then also that if there is going to be imprisonment, that imprisonment is going to be changed from 120 to 180 days. Now, some may think of this as being extreme or too high. But, you know, when you think about, you know, wanting, hoping that this will become, this will help to become a deterrent to the process, maybe a person would think twice, you know, in wanting, in wanting to graffiti someplace and risk the getting caught. So this is but a attempt, if you will, to be able to curb an issue, a matter that has caused a lot of blight and stress in our community. Let me just go ahead and say this. I, you know, I was in Saipan over the weekend for the state funeral of the late Lieutenant Governor, Saipan Lieutenant Governor Diego Benaventi. And one of the things I saw that was up there is, while their economy is suffering much more than we are, and, and it was evident in a number of businesses that were closed, what I saw was the pristine-ness. And while there was graffiti, there wasn't a whole lot. There was, there was, there was not as much as you would expect and you would think you to expect in an island where an economy was suffering is bad. Here, from Baragata to Agania, there are forty-eight places that were tagged. So hopefully, this bill will help to curb those issues. And that, I'm asking for my colleague's support on this. I understand there is an amendment to be proffered to be able to ensure that the, this amendment and is in line with what is currently in statute. So, you know, I appreciate the amendment and I ask for my colleagues for their, for their support. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Speaker Blas. Senator Tydeary, you're recognized on the main motion.
Good morning, Mr. Speaker, and good morning to my colleagues. Mr. Speaker, I stand in full support of this legislation. It was brought to my committee. We had a markup meeting. But prior to that, we ensured that the people that we invited, those who really are the stakeholders and those who can enforce, were present. We received testimony from the Attorney General, which, Mr. Speaker, I think it, it sums it up when, when the Deputy Attorney General came on behalf of Attorney Doug Moylan to bring strong support. And he says this, and I, and I think it's just so resonating and so true, it covers in every angle. He said, he expressed strong support for the bill, stating that graffiti is not merely cosmetic, but a crime that undermines public order, respect for property, and Guam's image. Take a moment, Guam's image. That, that is so resounding, you know, for all of us to think about and the importance of this legislation. I remember one time increasing the, the penalty for throwing cigarette butts out on the side of the road. I think, Mr. Speaker, you were there during the 30th Guam Legislature when I did that. Did it make a difference? I think so. Did it make a huge resound difference? Well, I think the tobacco tax kind of helped that, you know, increasing the cost more so than the penalty. But it did make some difference. And that's exactly what this body tries to do for our public, to bring safety, you know, and transparency, as well as keeping our island beautiful, not just for today, but for our next generation. It's something we should all take pride in. And what he mentioned was respect. That's so resounding. We also received testimony from judiciary. And judiciary, of course, leaves it up to this body on, on the penalty amount. We did reach out to other entities, the Mayor's Council, Department of Education, Department of Youth Affairs, and the Guam Visitors Bureau to provide any kind of testimony. And of course, they didn't, if they didn't show up, then we did make a phone call before the market meeting if they had any questions or concerns. So that being said, Mr. Speaker, I stand in full support of this legislation and thank my staff for their work on this and, and their diligence in, you know, contacting those other stakeholders. Other than that, I yield my time. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Tydeary. Any other member wish to be recognized? Senator Gumatalta, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity to offer a brief remarks in support of Bill 167. Mr. Speaker, through a May 24, 2025 news article, the Director of Public Works was interviewed after his staff had to spend hours away from critical projects so that they could paint over graffiti spray painted on the retaining wall along the then newly constructed Epa Road. Director Ariola said, quote, "That the graffiti was sad and unfortunate, that there were still selfish, low-life individuals out there who continue to harm, disrespect, and deface our beautiful island," close quote. Director Ariola emphasized that the graffiti was litter and vandalism, not a work of art. Mr. Speaker, the DPW director went further and suggested that he'd, quote, "Like to get a can of spray paint and graffiti on their face, even their mom's face, and let's see how they like it. I hope that day comes very soon," close quote. Mr. Speaker, as a parent, as an elected official of this community, I could not have described better what I believe might be the collective sentiment of our DPW director, island residents, law enforcement community, entrepreneurs, and military counterparts regarding the continued defacement of public and private buildings and infrastructure. According to GPD's 2023 Uniform Crime Report, there were 1,692 cases involving vandalism, destruction of property, damage reported, and only 144 out of the 1,692 cases were in fact cleared, Mr. Speaker. Just a couple of months before DPW's staff had to clean up that graffiti along Epa Road, a separate news article reported that four minors ages 13 to 17 were taken into custody for graffiti on the walls of the Baragata Library and bus stops in that respective village. Unfortunately, information has yet to be released confirming whether the minors or their parents or their legal guardians will be held liable and whether any form of restitution has been provided to date in support of the affected property owners in the village of Baragata. These risk-laden behaviors are in fact crimes against our community that have cost this government in so many ways, in some cases with no accountability. That is, until this policy came along. Mr. Speaker, is Bill 167 the single policy solution that would deter graffiti moving forward? We cannot leave graffiti unchecked. Probably not, but it is a step in the right direction, particularly at a time when Guam needs to use every tool at its disposal to establish strong penalties for violators and to help beautify our island so that people from our existing and our new visitor markets will actually decide to visit Guam and find a reason to return or encourage their families and their friends back to visit Guam because our island is safe, clean, and worthy of their curiosity, time, and hard-earned money. You don't have to look far. The October 2025 Japan Market Visitor Exit Survey Report, 10% of Japanese visitors say cleanliness is an area of improvement. Same period for our number-one market today in Korea, 18%, and second area of improvement. We just have to do better, Mr. Speaker, and policy has to do better for all. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for this opportunity to present these remarks today in strong support of Bill 167. And I thank the bill sponsor, Speaker Blas, a former police officer himself, for continuing to prioritize public safety. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator Gumatalta. Any other member wish to speak on, on the, on the main motion? Senator Parrish, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise in support of this amendment, I'm sorry, this bill. And I think this really gives an opportunity for the public to hear, you know, the laws that already exist and how we're going to strengthen the law that exists when it comes to graffiti. So if you can just give me some, a moment to just bring awareness to the public regarding graffiti laws. And so it is prohibited to possess any spray paint markers with the intent to make graffiti. It's also prohibited for a minor, a person under the age of 18, to possess spray paint broad-tip indelible markers on public property. And in addition, possession of spray paint or broad-tip indelible markers by minors on private property is prohibited without the consent of the owner. The other things that are important to note as well is that no person or firm shall sell or cause to be sold to any person under the age of 18 years, and no person under the age of 18 shall buy any aerosol container of spray paint or broad-tip indelible markers. And so the law that exists today was looking at everything. It was pretty, you know, I felt it was, it was pretty comprehensive. So they looked at everything, including the infractions. It states that the revocation, so the, if the offender is charged with defacement of property, the punishment can include revocation of the license or instruction permit of any driver in the violation of this section. It also holds the parents accountable. So the parents can also be punished if a minor is, is charged with this offense. Also, there could be a forfeiture of any property in commission of this crime or commission of this act of graffiti. It states that where a defendant is a minor, the parents or legal guardians shall be jointly and severally liable with a minor to make restitution. So the act of an individual doing graffiti on public property has many penalties, many ways in which the law can, can penalize. And it's not just the individual, it could be the parent. It could be the business that is also, can cause, can be also penalized. And so I, what I have is an amendment that I would like to proffer, and it deals with signage. And as we know, when we pass certain laws, signage is really critical because it, it basically triggers that awareness that this act is illegal and therefore not to do it. Because as we know, education is really critical in any, in our society when it comes to, in all aspects of our lives. And so what this amendment does, it aligns the signage with the proposed act. And so what this bill does, it increases the fine for the first penalty and then aligns with any subsequent penalty. It, it states that it's $4,000. So initially, it was $2,000 for the second offense and then $5,000 for any subsequent offenses. So what this bill proposes to do is just to hit any subsequent, subsequent offense at $4,000 after the first offense. And so that's what this amendment does. It aligns the, the bill with the signage. And so we want people to, to know and understand that, you know, it's not just that one person that did the act, but it's all of us, and the businesses that sell the product, the, the adults that are supervising the minors. So they are all culpable in this. And so we want to make it very clear in order to reduce graffiti, that, to make, make it clear that we, there are laws in place, already in place, that can fine you and can fine you in, in, based on this act. So I ask for my colleague's support on this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Parrish. On the Parrish amendment, any member wish to speak on the Parrish amendment? Senator Parrish, you want to close? Senator Tydeary? This on the amendment?
Sidoosmasi, Mr. Speaker, and, and sorry. I had heard about this amendment earlier in the morning, and I'd like to commend the author of this amendment, something that we, we did not catch in the market meeting and greatly appreciate her due diligence and, and hard work and research on this bill, a very important bill. And so I stand in full support of this amendment. It definitely covers the area of ensuring that the signs are all changed to adjust to the increase in cost. So I hope that could be a great deterrent for a lot of those people thinking about, you know, doing some kind of shenanigans on our, on our properties. So thank you so much, Mr. Speaker. I stand in full support.
Thank you, Senator Tydeary. Any other member wish to speak on the Parrish amendment? There being none, Senator Parrish, you'd like to close, or? On the Parrish amendment, any objections? No objections? Anyone else wish to speak on the main motion? Senator Duñez, you're recognized.
Sidoosmasi, Mr. Speaker, and good morning to our colleagues and to the people of Guam. I certainly rise in full support of this measure, 167-38. And I'm not sure during your time, Mr. Speaker, when you took over for me at Department of Youth Affairs, but one of the things we did, I'm sure it's not just youth who tag, but it is commonly youth who tag and deface property via graffiti quite often. During our time, we had very, very good youth service supervisors as well as our, you know, other staff that would work with our young people. And I mention this because a lot of times, outside of just the fines and particularly what might happen with the current law that exists, one of the effective tools our team would do is they would take our young people who were in custody and take them out on the weekends and other times that they were available and actually paint over the graffiti that was out there on the streets. It was not only to show that we have to beautify our island and, and to teach younger people how to not do this and the value, the destruction that it has and the value to painting over it and undoing the harm that was done. But normally, what happens with a lot of this tagging and graffiti, it's really youth gang activity and marking territory and kind of one-upping each other. And that's a lot of the activity. It's also a tool that are, during at least my time, I know that our correction officers, when the kids would get frustrated, sometimes they'd turn around and not want to do it anymore, and they'd start giving them intel in terms of who's doing it. So a lot of times, I do agree, of course, on increasing the fines. But a lot of times, the opportunity that also comes forward is that you can have these teaching moments in lieu of the fines. Sometimes this will be acceptable in terms of restoration. And so I just think anything we do, first and foremost, to bring heightened awareness to how this really is damaging to our community, damaging, first of all, for us and the beauty of our island and how we enjoy our island and the scenery every day when we're just commuting or enjoying what belongs to us. But then again, it also is a blight for, as the speaker and the mover of this, this, this motion, this bill had mentioned in terms of a subject matter at a conference today on tourism, something that really affects us all. You know, we've seen so many things that others have tried to do in the past and other legislatures, like even crimes against our guests and the like because of the fact that these crimes and these blights are not just something that brings, you know, ugliness for, you know, the sake of just calling it what it is and defacing our, our public properties and even private properties. But it's, it's, it's a crime against us again because it really could have effect in terms of how our visitors view, how we care for our island and the welcoming nature and the natural beauty. So I thank the mover for having brought this forward, trying to stiffen these penalties. But once again, maybe to revisit some things, if they're not currently going on, that have been done in the past to create opportunities for restitution and education. You know, this can only serve to put this matter forefront, at the forefront once again, Mr. Speaker. So I commend the author and look forward to voting in favor of this legislation. Sidoosmasi, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. Ranking Member Munia Barnes, you're recognized.
Prime, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak on this measure in support of 167-38 COR. And Manana Sidoos to you and to all of our colleagues here. I truly appreciate this bill. And as we look at increasing this fine, I remember many years ago, Mr. Speaker, when, I, I'm going to say, I think it was the children at Benaventi Middle or Dedido, one of the schools there that was involved in a, what, what legislation or what bill can you, as students, introduce to help make a difference for your island of Guam? And believe it or not, it was one of the major importance of these students to help make a difference for Guam was to work with the graffiti and with the vandalisms that were happening here. And they were really adamant to have their legislators look at their concern and introduce it for them. So it was a project, but within that project, it was a part of a citizens' federal program grant. And what they did was they got together, they did the investigations with their villages, and they wanted to make sure that the increase for graffiti and vandalism was raised. And because of that, they, we were able to raise it back then to $1,000. And now, as we look at this increase going up to $2,000, I think with the awareness that we're putting up there, the signage that's going to be included as the retiring speaker from Baragata brought up, I think that it is showing a commitment that, yes, we do listen and that these, this graffiti literally looks just ugly around our island. And when they talk about the beauty and what we need Guam to be, this is one way of showing our support that we're not going to tolerate, we're not going to tolerate graffiti. But I think we should even go one step further, Mr. Speaker, maybe in another legislation, that if you get caught, why even do the time? You should be out there cleaning it and, and, and having a sign or something saying, You should be out there cleaning it and having a sign or something saying, you know what, I committed graffiti, this is wrong, and I should clean it and let them clean it. Because until, until the defendant or to the person who commits the crime, until something grave happens to them, it's not going to mean anything. But this is a step in the right direction to hold these people accountable for their wrong actions, and I support the efforts and hoping the good sponsor from Baragada, the good speaker, would give us an opportunity or give me an opportunity to be a part of the co-sponsorship. So, thank you. I support the measure.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Calvo, you're recognized, ma'am.
Sidoos Massey, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise today in strong support of Bill Number 167-38, measure that directly addresses an issue every village mayor, business owner, and resident has been or has in with their own eyes. Mr. Speaker, the growing and persistent problem of graffiti vandalism across our island, this measure, which amends to increase fines and strengthen mandatory penalties for graffiti offenses on both public and private property. Graffiti is not harmless, far from it. It erodes, it actually erodes the appearance of our neighborhoods. It devalues our public and private properties, and it creates a perception of neglect that affects residents and visitors alike. It diverts limited government resources towards constant cleanup efforts, and it sends a message that vandalism is tolerated. That very disrespect for our shared spaces carries minimal consequences. But Bill 167 rejects that message. It says clearly that our island is not a canvas for criminal behavior. This bill doubles the fines for first and second offenses, increases mandatory minimum jail time for adult offenders, and expands the court's ability to impose penalties when graffiti becomes a repeat behavior. These are not excessive measures. They are proportionate responses to a problem that has become more brazen, more visible, and more costly. Mr. Speaker, keeping our public spaces clean is not merely aesthetic. Communities that take pride in their surroundings are safer, more welcoming, and more resilient. This bill empowers law enforcement and the courts with the tools they need to curb vandalism before it grows further, and it signals to our people that the legislature is committed to protecting the integrity of our neighborhoods. For these reasons, Mr. Speaker, I rise in strong support of Bill Number 167-38 COR, and I ask that my colleagues do the same. I thank the good author, and I would like to express my intent to be a co-sponsor of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Calvo. Senator Matanani, you're recognized, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Although I also rise in support of this legislation and its intent, because I do believe we need to be tougher on these sorts of crimes, I did have a point of inquiry for the author regarding whether he had any information as to any data regarding convictions of these sorts of crimes and fines that have been collected for these sorts of crimes, only because I believe that any law is as good as its enforcement. So, thank you.
I'll yield to the question, Mr. Speaker, and I appreciate the question. Unfortunately, there is no, in as far as definitive data on the amount that were received as a result of punishment, or, you know, how many people have been convicted since of this type of crime. I do know that, you know, there has, there has been convictions, and there has been penalties imposed in as far as monetary, but in as far as what, how much, I apologize, I do not have that information.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And again, I do rise in support of this legislation. I believe that we do need to get tougher on these sorts of acts of vandalism and crimes against our community, and I also wish to be added as a co-sponsor. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Matanani. Any other member wish to speak on the bill, on the main motion? Senator Parkinson, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Speaker. I rise in support of this legislation as well. I think that many of the retiring speakers are correct, that graffiti is not a harmless crime. It takes up resources from everywhere, from the police to the people who have to clean up the graffiti, to the potential business owners who now have to take an entire day of their productivity to repair some of these social ills that we're seeing. And so I stand in support of this legislation. But as I heard one of my colleagues speaking about things that we could do down the line, legislation we could do down the line, I think it's important we have that conversation. Because while I support this bill, I don't think it goes far enough. It is not enough for us as lawmakers to say no. We are taking a step in the right direction, but we need to turn that step into a series of steps so that we are walking confidently in the right direction. We need to consider our funding priorities, primarily in terms of getting rid of graffiti and vandalism and maintaining our public infrastructure. We are a tourism-based island at a time when the competition is at its fiercest globally. Us, more than anyone, needs to fight against things like graffiti and vandalism and poor maintenance of our public infrastructure. Because when our tourists see the cleanliness or lack of cleanliness of our bathrooms, see things that are destroyed and not working, see graffiti on the walls, that affects our That affects our ability to draw business and opportunity and dollars to Guam. So we really need to reconsider our budget priorities. If I could have a do-over on some of the previous budgets I've been a part of, I'd consider more to actively fighting things like graffiti and vandalism. When I was a young firefighter, there used to be an old way of fighting fires that went out of vogue as we learned more about the fire cycle. Before, the process used to be, fight the fires out by 10:00 a.m. Soon as you fight it, you take care of it right away. And we found that that wasn't necessarily the best thing for the ecosystem, because you didn't have the natural burns that were supposed to be there. But as a policy for handling graffiti, I think that's something we should consider. Consider the necessary funding to Parks and Rec or DPW or whatever organization, the mayors, that we feel would be best in suit to handle and clean these problems up as soon as possible. Because it's not enough to say no. Somebody goes out there and the graffiti is put on the walls, and this law that passes in the future actually does its part in punishing and assigning responsibility to the graffiti. But that doesn't solve the problem of the graffiti being on the wall. We need to take one more step in the future so that we are walking in the right direction. The BPT was about $40 million. Imagine what we can do if we invested $40 million so that every piece of graffiti was cleaned up by 10:00 a.m. the same day we saw it, that we put so much care and pride in the way our island looks and is presented, not just for the people that don't live here, but for us as well. I don't know about you, but I feel amazing when my house is clean, when things are in order, when we've done our fight to fight entropy. We need maintenance everywhere. Everywhere across this island, we need maintenance, we need maintenance workers to put down this graffiti. I heard one of my colleagues express the extreme feelings that people have towards this graffiti. And so it's not enough for us to say no. We, as a legislature, we, as a community, we should put our investment there, in things where people can see their dollars at work, not just in the long term, but in the short term too. That when a street light is broken, it gets fixed. When a traffic light is on the fritz, it gets repaired in a timely manner. When the lines on roads get blurry, we make them clear again. And when people put graffiti on our walls, we remove the graffiti immediately. I think that would be a worthy consideration if we were ever to bring back the BPT to more sensible levels. Fix the broken windows, put these fires out by 10:00 a.m., and let's solve the graffiti problem in our community, not just by saying no. As people in this chamber know, saying no doesn't build anything. It potentially is a tool in the toolbox, as some of my colleagues have said, in preventing people from doing that bad thing, but it doesn't entirely stop it. And so it is incumbent on us to invest the resources in our community to clean up these graffitis, to keep our bathrooms looking clean, to keep things respectable for ourselves, let the world see how we respect our own community and our own island by keeping these places beautiful, a beauty that we see every day, that we share with them. Because ultimately, that is who is going to be the biggest beneficiary of any of our work to clean up graffiti and to keep maintenance on our public infrastructure in such a way that we can be proud. So I rise in support of this legislation, and I thank the author for introducing it. And at this time, sir, I would ask my colleagues to vote for it and yield the rest of my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Parkinson. Anyone else on the main motion? There being none. Senator Blas, you like to, Speaker Blas, you like to close?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and thank you to my colleagues who took the time to be able to rise in support and concern with regard to this legislation. You know, Mr. Speaker, I have to agree with, in theory, with the retiring speaker in the need not just to increase the penalty, but to find a way to be able to ensure that it gets addressed as quickly as possible. And maybe not the same funding source, but, and it could be in another piece of legislation that I will intend to draft, to ensure that the penalties that are collected are actually utilized to be able to ensure that we can clean the mess that's being made, provided to either individual reporting or to the village where the blight had occurred. I'll find a way to be able to do that. But thank you very much, Mr. Senator Parkinson. I also appreciated the remarks from the gentle lady from Baragada, where she actually coined that this legislation is to ensure that, she characterized graffiti as a canvas for criminal activity. She's so right. You know, that's what graffiti is. It's criminal activity painted on a wall, spray painted, you know, on a fence, and we got to stop that. Because our beauty, the scenery that we have, that's what makes us, and there's no beauty in the graffiti that, right now, again, like I says, is spray painted on about 48 different places from Baragada to here. So I thank them for that. Most importantly, I want to thank the Oversight Chair, Senator Tidaway, and her committee, for seeing the importance and for working on, you know, making sure that this legislation can be considered in session. And Senator Perez for her contribution and amendment to strengthen this bill. You know, one of my colleagues, one of our colleagues has brought up, you know, an issue, he said, well, you know, a lot of times, maybe this graffiti is made by individuals who, if you oppose the criminal penalty, the fine, imposition of fine, they don't have the means to be able to pay it. That's why one of the things I want to be reminded is, is that in law, there is the option and the ability for the courts to either impose the, the financial penalty or the, the ability to, the imprisonment, the imprisonment. If you don't, if you do the crime, you don't have the cash, do the time. So there is, that's kept there, and it provides for even a harsher imprisonment if you're subsequently caught for subsequent. So with that, and I want to, again, thank my colleagues. And I'd like to then, I'll now offer the amendment, Mr. Speaker, to include co-sponsors to the legislation. And it appears that actually, though all senators, unless otherwise, all senators present, to be included as co-sponsors to the legislation, but I want to, most especially, that Senators Telo, Tidaway, and Sabina Perez, if they don't mind, they be the second and third, and then everybody else afterwards. So that'd be my motion.
On the amendment to add co-sponsors with Senator Tidaway and Senator Perez as first and second, and everyone else alphabetically, or?
That's fine.
Alphabetically, to be added as co-sponsors. Any objections? Any objections? No objections?
With that, Mr. Chair, Mr. Speaker, I would humbly request to move Bill 167-38COR as amended on the floor to the third reading.
On the motion to move Bill 167-38COR as amended on the floor, the third reading, any objections? There being none. It's ordered. We'll take a one-minute recess.
Legislators back from recess. Vice Speaker, you are recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to move Bill 174-38COR as amended by Committee on Finance and Government Operations at this time back to committee.
Okay. There is a motion to move Bill 174-38COR as amended by Committee back to committee. Are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objections, motion carries. Vice Speaker, sir, you are still recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to move Bill 176-38COR to the third reading. I'd like to speak on the motion, please.
Can you go ahead and please read the title?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, when a party approaches the legislature or an agency with a proposal to lease government of Guam land, one common factor of these leases is that it be leased at fair market lease price. Current law, however, does not allow existing tenants to lease land at fair market lease prices. Instead, what it does is that it puts it out for bid and lease to the highest bidder. This means businesses could find themselves out of business because some other businesses, you know, with deeper pockets, usually outbid them. I maintain that government deserves fair market value for the leases of government property. I don't believe that the government should seek higher than fair market value by forcing existing tenants into a bidding war, especially when the bidders have only one chance to submit a bid. And the bill... This bill allows existing tenants in good standing to renew their lease at fair market Today, there are businesses that have secured very long-term leases for low rents without escalation clauses, and that's in the past. If this bill becomes law, all of those tenants, provided they are in good standing, will have an opportunity to renew their fair lease prices and continue doing business with the government of Guam. You know, what this does, Mr. Speaker, is that, you know, we got to make sure that... We ensure that small businesses have that opportunity to continue to operate, especially when they're the lifeline of our economy. Bill 176-38 proposes a new framework where tenants in good standing may renew at fair market value. The community continuity and longstanding tenants must remain rooted, preserving Guam's cultural and commercial identity. Reduce, you know, this also reduces costly turnover and administrative burden of rebidding. And this will also demonstrate smart governance, fair to tenants and fair to taxpayers. So I ask for my colleagues' support on this measure, and I hope that I'll be able to get their votes to ensure that bill... That this bill passes and becomes law, 176-38. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
You're very welcome. On the bill, on the bill, are there any senators wishing to speak on the bill? On the bill, any senators wishing to speak on the bill? Must be a great bill. Senator from... Gentleman from Marzoni, ma'am, you're recognized.
I rise in opposition to this bill, which seeks to allow current lessors of... laces of the government of Guam, people who have had leases, sometimes for five years, sometimes for twenty years, whatever amount, as long as a minimum of five years, to extend for fifteen years, just like that, blanket. It actually goes totally against our procurement law, which, when they first got these leases, many of them had to compete. And that's what we require, is fairness. We advertise so that everybody has a fair chance to get this lease, and everyone has that fair chance to operate a business at this location of government of Guam property. Sometimes we make exceptions because there are only certain uses of this property, or we need a certain business. Like at the airport, we want certain businesses to come in, and we can dictate that we will make this competitive for all this certain type of business. But to just say, "All of you existing leases, you get to renew." What about all of those who had competed for those leases? It's so unfair. And one of the things that we tout about Guam's economy is that we go by the rule of law. That means we comply with the procurement law. Everybody knows the rules. And if you think they're being unfair, you get to protest. But this bill goes around all of that, and it says, "The legislature has deemed that you don't need to compete, you don't need to even submit a bid, you don't need to do anything. We, the legislature, are continuing your lease." And so I went to the public hearing, and GIDA says they support this because it's going to allow their tenants, who are in good standing, to continue, and this will elevate our competitiveness in the region. But I couldn't get from them, how does this bill that removes competition increase our I feel for small businesses that don't want to move from their current locations, and maybe GIDA can make an exception where they can make a policy that makes sense to us, like, "We really need this certain type of business to be at this exact location, and so, and we don't have any other way to do that except to lease them government of Guam land, like we need a certain business near the airport. So we need to lease them government of Guam land so that we can have that business near the airport, or near the hospital, or something that is crucial to the location." Otherwise, they're asking us not to get what the government of Guam can get in value for this property. And I have a big problem with that because that's what we've been trying to do with these agencies, is make sure they stop giving these sweetheart deals and get value for the government of Guam, for the people of Guam whose land that is. One in particular is the Ancestral Lands Commission. This bill, you know, we had testimony from small businesses, and I agree, we should support the jobs that small businesses are creating. But does the government of Guam need to give another sweetheart deal to these multimillion-dollar companies to give them a break from competing on procurement, to give them a break on competing for government of Guam land, especially for where there is a way to get value? And the Ancestral Lands Commission in particular, they're not there to take care of companies. They are there to take care of their beneficiaries. They're supposed to be doing it as fiduciaries. It's a trust. They're supposed to do what is best for the beneficiaries, and that means when you're going to lease out your property to commercial tenants, you get the best value that you can get because we need all the cash we can to give it out to those landowners who are never going to get their properties back because we kept them, the government kept them, such as the Teasland owners. So what GIDA says, when I finally asked them to tell us, "What leases are we talking about here?", they said there are two of their tenants who are expiring, and they want to extend without competition, and Ancestral Lands has two, AT&amp;T and Smith Bridge. And they're... It is so, I think, on the border of corruption to say, "Now, we're going to let them..." Do you know what the fair market, quote, "fair market value" that GIDA determined for AT&amp;T to be was so far below the current valuation? And AT&amp;T had agreed to a higher valuation, but now we're going to let them go back to fifteen years without anything in front of us, nothing in front of the legislature. We are blanketly approving all of those leases for fifteen more years. And I really think that's a disservice to the people of Guam. We should have any of those extended leases that they want to bypass procurement, bypass the agencies, and we should have the details in front of us and do that on case-by-case basis, based on the need, based on the value that they're going to give us. And fair market value has been used... We got ten thousand dollars deemed to be fair market value for a submerged cable lease that was actually worth a million dollars. So no, I absolutely oppose this bill, Mr. Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. On the bill. On the bill. Gentleman from Talavol, sir, please be cognizant of time.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the time to comment on Bill 176, which, according to the Guam Economic Development Authority, creates additional opportunities for local established commercial tenants in good standing to continue contributing to our island's economy while ensuring fair market value protection for publicly owned real property assets. This is from GIDA, which has this awesome task to be able to support, not just growing their own department, but also how they look at the rest of this economy. Mr. Speaker, while I recognize that Bill 176 proposes a policy that will be helpful to entrepreneurs who have invested in our island and who have dedicated their time, their energy, and their resources to help strengthen our local economy, I also acknowledge that tenants of publicly owned land and facilities must take their obligations seriously. Mr. Speaker, publicly owned land must never be considered the generic brand of rental properties. On the contrary, these resources must be held to the same, if not higher, standards than private land. Why? Because the citizens of our great island collectively own these important pieces of real estate or these buildings, not a private owner, not a corporation. We, the people of Guam, have a duty to preserve these lands and facilities for this and future generations of Alquamanians. Mr. Speaker, I register these observations, and I thank the author of the bill for offering policy ideas as this thirty-eighth Guam legislature continues to prioritize the difficult but necessary work of strengthening Guam's economy. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. On the bill, gentleman lady from Tumuni, first.
Sujusmasi, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, this bill has a lot of issues, and one of the biggest issues that this bill has is a procurement issue, a major procurement issue. So let's begin with that. Procurement put in place is done to be fair, transparent, and to ensure, now especially to ensure, that the government gets the best end of the deal. Read the procurement law. It requires that. I haven't had a chance to talk to GIDA, where they came up with the notion that this property is something they can play with, they feel they can make any choice they want. This is not their private property. We all have that ability to do that with our own land, our own rentals. I have a rental, I can decide if I wanted to rent to local or military. That's my prerogative. But our responsibility and duty for this land belongs to the people of Guam, not sweetheart deals for anybody. Procurement is a process with all those things that I mentioned earlier, most especially in fairness. How is it fair that when they went out to bid and was given a contract for X amount of years, that all of a sudden, they can change it and say, "Okay, we want to extend and not allow competition. Oh, but what we'll do is we'll look at the fair market value today, and we'll just charge you that." What kind of people do we have working at GIDA to agree to that? I'm going to question it as the Oversight Chair of GIDA. Their responsibility is not only fair market value, but to follow procurement, like every other agency on this island. There's a process. In fact, during the public hearing, it was mentioned the AT&amp;T lease extension was vetoed by the governor because her concern is that this is a department for the procurement law, where there was solicited these properties for leases based on procurement law. The scary part is that we may have people in this body today willing to break the trust of the people, willing to make deals on the sideline for certain companies. That's scary because we know GIDA can't do this on their own, thank goodness, that the only way for this to happen is to come to this body and change the law to help somebody. Is that a special interest or what? That's special interest. And if GIDA is playing these games for certain tenants to play special interest, then we need to look at GIDA thoroughly and have an oversight hearing with GIDA to find out why would they do something like that. This is a procurement issue. The process of all these leases on the island went through a process, and now this body wants to change that for nothing more than to help a friend out or to... Their explanation about, "Oh, this is going to be better governance for our people." No, it's not going to be better governance. When you can get more money for the people of Guam, ask yourself this: If you had a piece of property and you needed to sell it, and especially if you're in dire need, like this government is, has anybody noticed that we are ten million dollars short in the CRR? We... Report, 10 million? We are short, this government of Guam is short. And now we're here willing to give away the store. We can't do that. My time is up. I wish I had more time to be nice about why it's so important that we maintain procurement. I understand what the good author is trying to do to help our local people, but if you ask anybody on the street today, they're not being helped. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Gentlemen from Tumundi, sir, you're recognized.
Sis Masi, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I'm sorry. Point of order. Are we... Is our time being cut from 10 to 5 minutes?
It was supposed to have been 5 minutes, ma'am.
What do you mean? The standing rule says 15 minutes.
No, ma'am, it's 5 minutes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Mr. Speaker, I just want to know how that rule got changed, where we have 15 minutes to speak on every bill is now 5 minutes.
Second recess.
And how could it be done randomly?
Second recess. Let's let you back in session. Senator Tali, we still have 5 minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And thank you for the additional time. Sometimes when you're, you know, when you feel like you're being... Not the word bully, but when you feel that you just have this overwhelming of, of... You know, things not going your way or you're knowing that this is the right thing to do and you feel you don't have that support behind you and you're trying your best to try and explain that this is not the right way. I mean, this is not a fair way. And it's all about fairness. So I guess this is God sent having that extra 5 minutes. Because I just got off the phone with the director from Gida. You know, having a conversation with her and asking her, how did this happen? Did this come from you? And it absolutely did not come from her. This bill did not come from Gida. This bill came from two tenants who sought this body to help them out so that they don't have to bid on the property after their lease expires. Wow. Wow. Let that sink in. So then I asked, I said, okay, so this tenant didn't go to you either? And ask for your help? And they said, yes, they did. Wow, are we really going to go there, Mr. Speaker? Is this body going to bypass being good stewards and being trustworthy of the people's property? We don't own this property, people. It's not ours to give away. Laws were put in place for a reason. And it was from, these laws were created from trial and error. Land scams. What did this body do? Create more areas, create boundaries, provide more transparency and accountability. That's what this body did. When people were breaking laws and actually getting away with it, what did this body do? Created more laws to ensure that it doesn't happen again. And right now, this bill, even though it's well-intended, it's taking us backwards. Back to the days of the Paree system. It's not fair. Technology has brought a reality to our people in their living room, on their phones, so clearly now. We need to do the right thing, the fair thing, and be good stewards of the people and their property and our future generations. I did have one question to ask the author if he should yield, Mr. Speaker.
What's the question?
My question is, based on this bill, is Gida forced to extend the leases of those individuals? Are they forced to do it by this law? Or is it something that Gida will have to make a decision on their own, even if they're in good standing? Let's say hypothetically, they're all in good standing. Because, Mr. Speaker, think about it. If they're not in good standing, Gida should have canceled that contract a long time ago. So I hope they're doing that. But in good standing, will Gida have the final decision? Is my question, based on this bill, if it were to pass?
I yield to the question, and yes, Gida will have the final say. They're the ones that are managing these properties and they'll be the ones to determine if the tenant is in good standing, if they abide by all the covenants of their lease agreement from the very day it was, from its inception until an extension is therefore approved. But yes, Gida has the final say.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So, you know, this is, this is an area that the Attorney General needs to be very aware about. Because it sounds to me like if Gida does do something like this, it could be coercion. This can be a major lawsuit ready to happen. So Gida, you better beware. Because the people of Guam are watching what you're doing to their property, their land, and their children and grandchildren's land. Because we're, I'm watching here and I'm sure there's a bunch of senators in here are going to do the right thing by the people of Guam. It's only expected of us. It should be expected of us. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Senator Tali, you still have 5 minutes. Senator Tali, you still have... I want to be fair.
Thank you. I just want to use an example of one of the long-term leases. Because long-term leases have to be, had to be approved by the legislature. The Gida lease for the 8, I mean, the ancestral lands lease, those are the two. Ancestral lands wants to lease to AT&amp;T and to Smithbridge. Again, multimillion-dollar corporations. One of the properties that AT&amp;T wanted to lease, according to Gida, its fair market value at the time when they wanted it extended for, I think, 20 more years, was going to be $275,000, $302,000. And that was based on fair market value and evaluation that really didn't take into account the special nature of this type of business, this type of property relative to this type of business. It's pretty much the value for anyone to use that type of property next to the beach at Tengisan. The committee was able to try to force Gida to get a better evaluation, which they have not done yet, which they're supposedly still trying to do. But that was their fair market valuation. They pretty much just increased what the rent was by a certain percentage. They pretty much just increased what the rent was by a certain percentage. The amount that AT&amp;T was willing to pay was a minimum of half a million dollars versus the $300,000. And that is significant for the ancestral lands commissioner, commission beneficiaries, again, who are those people whose lands were returned by the federal government, but kept by the government of Guam for other uses, and that we have promised for decades to compensate. So I don't see who we are in here to come in here today and use this term, we're gonna protect small businesses. No, we're not. We're going to create chaos by removing competition for government lands, removing the fairness in the procurement law, removing GIDEA's ability to determine fair market value in, in a way that is reasonable for that property. For example, the bill says it's, it's the lessy who gets to determine who the appraiser is going to be. And they're just gonna pay for an appraiser, and they're done. That's the value that GIDEA is going to take. And that GIDEA has to extend them for 15 more years. Again, I don't, I agree with the previous speaker there. It's not a single one of you that's going to do that with your own property. Why are you going to allow that for the government of Guam? Everybody's on notice on when these leases end, and they should be negotiating for new leases. And that's why a blanket approval of all of them for 15 more years at the rate that they determine to be the fair market value is very unjust for the people of Guam, the taxpayers of Guam, who are covering every expense that we cannot pay from rental. And this is especially egregious, I think, in situations where we know this property's marketable. Smithbridge properties, for example. We just came in here with a bill to mine another section of the coast. That's exactly what this property is for. So I'm sure there are companies interested in this property, just like Smithbridge is. So I don't see why we're going to allow them to dictate the terms and to continue without any fair notice to any of those other companies. In the beginning, when they put in a bid to lease this property, they know it's for a specific term. If they knew it was for a longer term, what could we have done with the negotiations at that time? What would the other bidders have done to get a much longer lease at that time? We probably would have got better value, but we didn't. And I'd say it's very unfair, very unfair for everyone else who's going through the procurement law, and very unfair for the beneficiaries of the ancestral lands who have been waiting. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen from tomorrow morning, sir, you're not recognized, so you have ten minutes.
This is Massey, Mr. Speaker, and I just want to rise in support of the bill, and I think it's important, because it's a very short bill, to address some of the comments that have been made by our colleagues. So just read it. "A tenant who has a commercial lease of government of Guam property and has continuously occupied the government lease property for at least five years and has fully complied with all lease terms and conditions throughout such occupancy may extend the lease at fair market value, which shall be determined by an appraiser who is licensed to do business on Guam and is paid for by the tenant for an additional term or terms to the total of which shall not exceed 15 years with approval, with approval from the lesser. If such extension is granted, if such extension is granted, fair market value shall be determined for at least every five years during the extension period, but in no event shall rent be lessed than charged during the previous five-year period." So let me make some observations in the way the bill is written. First of all, we're talking about procurement. If you have a lease that is in good standing and been complied with, and the lease was issued to begin with, unless procurement law didn't exist during the consummation of that lease, it should be, have been properly procured. If not, that should be investigated and terminated. My second point is, obviously, the lessor needs to be in good standing and have complied with all terms and conditions. The third is, there is a may-end there. It's not explicit. And it's clear that the lessor, being GIDEA or any other government of Guam entity, that could possibly avail this opportunity, does not have the obligation to grant it going forward. It's a may provision. Mr. Speaker, there's an escalation clause, because it needs to be evaluated for every five years of the 15-year possible term. The licensed appraiser has to be licensed to do business on Guam as an appraiser, and an appraiser who does not properly calculate fair market value and is questioned on that, I'm sure, would not want their name attached to, if they care about their business and their future doing business on Guam, not appraising the property properly. So I know that there's been made mention of companies on the floor here. I don't see anything in the bill that names any companies. I hear a lot of innuendo.
Mr. Speaker, that was confirmed during the public hearing. I asked them, who are the companies whose leases are trying to be extended? And those are the companies that GIDEA said.
If GIDEA made reference to that, Mr. Speaker, that's GIDEA making reference to that, but it's not referenced in the bill. That's speculation. Between now and voting, I've heard GIDEA and phone calls, and what GIDEA says now and whatever else, they can send us an amended testimony. But in the committee report, they support this bill, Mr. Speaker. And unless that changes for any reason, and we're not updated by the time we go to vote on this bill, that would be innuendo and speculation. We haven't, we didn't, we weren't on the phone call. So, you know, Ms. Garcia, if you'd like to, you can send an amended version of the testimony, and I'm sure the senators will entertain it and maybe make it part of their decision. But for now, what exists is the bill not naming any companies, and it's government-wide. It doesn't say GIDEA shall for these two leases. Doesn't say anything like that. So it's up to those... It's not only GIDEA that leases government property or that manages leases that way. So listen, I, you know, we're all gonna vote based on what we think the opportunities may exist here going forward. Is this a good thing to do? Is this not a good thing to do? I agree with the opening remarks of the mover saying that businesses in good standing that had a properly procured lease, that are paying their rent, that are in good standing, have this opportunity if this bill passes. I do agree that sometimes we might create a bidding war. And so I don't know. I don't know how we treat businesses that are following procurement, leasing land from the government, coming to their five-year term lease. If the law permits, they say, hey, I'd like to have an extended term up to 15 years. It will be revisited every five years, and I'll hire an appraiser. I'll show the appraised value of it, and we'll sit down and negotiate whether or not that's acceptable. At least it's an opportunity. The government entity can say no. There's nothing in here in this bill, if it becomes law that says, ah, I did my part, you have to give me 15 years. What if the government feels that the appraiser, the appraisal looks good? They don't have to go out and put the property back on the market? They don't have to let it sit and not generate revenue? What happens if the revenue and other associated revenue, you know, is tied to payment of bonds? Or tied as part of that source? You don't want to lose that revenue if it's consistent, if it's fair market value? And maybe you say up to 15 years, you know what? During the escalation clause, after that, five years? We can have that appraised again, and you're gonna continue to pay fair market value or can terminate it? It's up to. So unless it was so-called some sort of sweetheart deal from the beginning, which these entities better be on the hook for, if that's what they've done and account for, standard escalation clauses and standard ability to renew and leases is standard in commercial properties and commercial property management. So we're throwing around a lot of terms here that haven't been substantiated, at least maybe from a legal perspective. Has anybody been taken to court for a sweetheart deal? I don't know. I haven't seen it. Do people interpret sweetheart deals? There may be. But this bill does not create that scenario. If it existed, then it should be terminated to begin with. It creates an opportunity for a business in good span, good standing, and it has proper durable language that is consistent with lease terms in the commercial, commercial, um, land or leasehold. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, I support the bill.
Thank you. On the bill. On the bill. Any other senator wishing to speak on the bill? On the bill? Vice Speaker? Or guys? Okay?
Mr. Speaker, you called me already.
You called already.
I'm gonna take it for the closing. Thank you.
Vice Speaker, proceed with your closing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, one thing about this floor, Mr. Speaker, if I may, is that this floor is so unique. Is that what we say on this floor, we don't get held accountable. Any member of this floor, go out there to the public, go outside of this legislative hall and say what you say on this floor to those people, whether it be businesses or professions like appraisers or anyone out there, and call them what you call them on this floor, and I bet you will see a lawsuit going to your, yourself. I don't think there's any room for name-calling on this session floor. If you're for a bill, then be for a bill. If you're against it, be against it. But to question people's integrity, especially professionals, calling out their integrity is totally uncalled for. If there has been sweetheart deals, like people say, or this pari pari, or whatever it may be, then it should have been called out years ago.
Point of order, dispense that point of order, Mr. Speaker. Just, just for the public, I had raised my hand to speak on the bill.
Okay, our shift point of order, Senator Barnett. I had called twice. Any speakers? Any speakers? If you're ready, you already knew what the procedure is. Once the speaker is done, okay? I'm not gonna wait for you to think about it.
But with all due respect, Mr. Speaker, Senator Leon and I were looking at who was gonna go, and that's when I raised my hand, and I wasn't recognized.
You know, I've already called it. Thank you very much.
So you're not gonna let me speak on the bill?
I've already, the vice speaker is already...
Mr. Speaker, respectfully, my hand was raised.
Your hand raised, your hand was raised after I had...
I think I deserve a chance to speak on this bill, which seeks to prostitute our people's land, not protect it. Bang it harder, Mr. Speaker.
I will. Thank you very much. Mr. Vice Speaker. Mr. Vice Speaker, you can proceed, sir.
Mr. Speaker, this legislation is for tenants in good standing to extend their leases. This is not an original lease. If any of those sayings had been an issue back then, you know what? The oversight chairs of the previous legislature should have called them out. For 20 years, we had a Democrat legislature in this body who could have called out these leases that had been sweetheart deals. So obviously, there are no sweetheart deals.
Point of order, Mr. Speaker, and point of information.
What's your point of order, man?
I don't know what's a sweetheart deal, but I know that when the leases expire, they expire. And everybody's been put on notice that they are going to expire, and everyone was put on notice of how long the leases would be before they were procured. And now to bypass any kind of competitive procurement.
Are you giving her an addition?
That may be a special deal.
You're out of order now. Thank you very much. Mr. Vice Speaker, continue.
So the, all the safeguards are here from the original lease of an individual who, or a company that has procured leases for government property. On this extension, there is an escalation every five years. So I, I don't know how they, they, they come up with the innuendos of sweetheart deals. If there's anyone that broke the law, hold them accountable. Call them out on it. Because people have gone to jail for it. But not to do anything, I think is a greater injustice. So many things have been coming through these halls in the past 11 months that have never been addressed. And now that we're taking the opportunity to address these issues, all of a sudden now, it's no good. If you're gonna be for the measure, vote for it. If not, don't vote for it. But I think it is really, really just, just bad, just to call people out and say, what, what do you think an appraiser is gonna do? Be, put their, put their license on, on the line? Or an attorney's gonna put their license on the line? Or even these people in these government agencies who run our agencies? They take a lifetime to build their integrity. I don't think they're gonna just wash that away with a sweetheart deal. I don't think they're going to just wash that away with a sweetheart deal. Maybe sometimes if you stop looking at all the bad and look what the good in people have, then perhaps maybe you'll be able to have a different outlook. But because something bad happens to you, don't take it out on everyone else. Mr. Speaker, I move that Bill 176-38 be sent down to the third reading.
There is a motion to move Bill 176-38-COR to the third reading.
Mr. Speaker, could I just make a point of information? You don't mind?
So what's your inquiry?
Well, my point of information is that one of the retiring speakers had said that there was no mention of a specific company in the public hearing. But, you know, Mr. Speaker, maybe instead of reading the bill, they should have read the committee report. Because it's right there in black and white, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Just wanted to record to reflect that Greta representatives confirmed that the AT&amp;T property was a subject of the bill.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry. If we were allowed to debate the bill, we wouldn't be in this situation. But obviously, you guys are scared. You're scared to let us debate this bill for the people.
On the motion, there has been an objection. Therefore, all, okay, all those in favor of moving the Bill 176-38-COR to the third reading, please indicate by raising your hand. Bill number 183-38-COR, Senator Kumutoto, you recognize?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move to place Bill number 183-38-COR as amended by the Committee on Transportation, Tourism, Utilities, Customs and Foreign, Federal and Foreign Affairs into the third reading filing request to speak on the bill. The bill's title is "An Act to Amend Section 2B of Public Law 34-112" as amended relative to supporting the Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency's ongoing efforts to develop the customs satellite inspection holding and secured sterile facility.
You can proceed.
Thank you so much, Mr. Speaker. I introduce Bill 183 after the Customs Committee, led by Chairman, our good friend from Timuning, met with Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency officials during a tour of CQA operations at the Port Authority of Guam on March 6, 2025. It was through my discussion with CQA staff during that chance legislative visit where I learned that the agency had yet to identify a funding source to support the satellite inspection facility that is required by Public Law 34-112 as amended by Public Law 36-12. Following our Port Authority of Guam visit, I sent a letter requesting the assistance of Guam delegate to the U.S. House of Representatives Congressman James Moylan in providing financial support for the development of a CQA satellite inspection facility. Mr. Speaker, I also reached out directly to CQA Director Ike Paredo on April 24, 2025, requesting information on the status of the satellite inspection facility. Director Paredo informed me several days later that his agency was moving forward with a project. Through collaboration with the Port Authority of Guam and their consultants, CQA convened meetings to discuss the optimal integration of the facility into the port's master plan. Due to the need for such a facility and the deadline imposed by the public law, CQA established a container inspection facility working group in early 2024. The CIF working group has been described as the entity responsible for overseeing all facets of the project, including facility design, operational needs, equipment, and future growth of the agency, as well as exploring all reasonable financing options to fund this facility, construction, and its sustainability. Mr. Speaker, according to CQA, to ensure comprehensive planning, the CIF working group conducted a site visit to the U.S. Customs and Border Protection Container Inspection Facility in the state of Washington, Seattle, to be exact, to assess facility requirements there. Based on the CIF working group's assessment, the facility necessary to meet CQA's operational and strategic needs is estimated to cost upwards of $40 million. To secure funding, CQA informed the Committee on Public Safety, Emergency Management, and Guam National Guard at that time that it had planned to submit a grant application to the U.S. Department of Transportation Maritime Administration under the Port Infrastructure Development Program 2025. Mr. Speaker, if successful, the grant would cover 80% of the estimated cost for the construction, equipping, and furnishing of the facility. During the public hearing on Bill 183, we learned from CQA that they received $2 million from the Maritime Administration to help with the A&E portion of the envisioned satellite inspection facility. With the approval of Bill 183, CQA leadership understands the urgency of developing the facility, which, once operational, will strengthen the ability of our law enforcement community to guard against the illegal movement of weapons, drugs, and other contraband into our great American territory. Additionally, the establishment of a CQA satellite inspection facility would strengthen our ongoing efforts to address the importation of invasive species, which continue to threaten Guam's natural resources and those of the vitally important ecosystems in and around Micronesia. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the time, and I do look forward to discussion here on this bill. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. On the bill. On the bill. Any senators wishing to speak on the bill? Senator, good senator from Timuning, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and good afternoon. Actually, almost good afternoon. I'm full support, of course, of Bill 183-38. Mr. Speaker, this is the first bill of a series of bills that will be introduced. And I want to thank the good author, of course, from Talapofo for its introduction. You know, just recently, actually, I think it was a few days ago, we introduced 228-38, of course. And that followed, of course, the introduction of the harmonized bill, of course, authored, of course, by previous legislature, by the good senator from Mangilau, of course, Senator Tina Rose Munia Barnes, to the harmonized system. Modernizing, of course, our Customs and Quarantine Agency. Just recently, about a few weeks ago, we had an opportunity to visit the modernization of Customs and Quarantine effects down in Palau. I wasn't able to attend, and neither was the author of Harmonized System, of course, Senator Tina Rose Munia Barnes. But we were represented by, of course, a committee member, of course, Senator Borja was down there and, again, witness alongside the folks from Customs and Quarantine, BSP, and other government agencies in regards to their modernization. And we are the only ones in this region that have not yet implemented the modernization, the harmonized system. And their first month of implementation of the harmonized system, their collections went up 21%, Mr. Speaker. We know the OPA had reported that there was in excess of $100 million that has not, you know, again, that has leaked and not been collected. So with this, Mr. Speaker, again, this is a series of bills that will be introduced to modernize our Customs and Quarantine Agency. And beginning, of course, with a facility that's yet to be built down at the Port Authority to help in that modernization system. So again, I want to thank the good author for Bill 183-38. And again, as he has said, as a result of our tour of the Port Authority and the space there that was allotted for this space to be built. So in that, again, you're going to see a series of bills being introduced again for the modernization of our Customs and Quarantine Agency. With that, Mr. Speaker, thank you very much. And again, I urge my colleagues to support this much-needed bill for Customs and Quarantine Agency. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. On the bill. Any other senator wishing to speak? General Lady from Bago Bay, ranking member, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to rise in support of this measure and thank the good author from Talapofo for introducing this legislation. And as you heard intently from the previous speaker from Timuning in the efforts of what Customs and Quarantine is doing. And moving on with what they call the harmonized code, I wanted to note for the record that, yes, Guam is the only area in this specific region that has not been included. But the realization of that program going and then working on the facilities that should have been really done, but is taking some time, this extension will give them that opportunity. And the realization, Mr. Speaker, is literally in the hundreds of millions of dollars that could be worked on. And as the good senator from Timuning also noted, that there will be a series of bills coming down in reference to supporting the efforts of the Guam Customs and Quarantine. I want to say that this is in the right step into the right direction and hoping that this August body will continue its efforts so that we can truly modernize and update what Customs and Quarantine needs to do to make its facility, to make its program, to make the mission mandates of what Customs and Quarantine need to do for the island of Guam. I want to say they have been working on their due diligence. And hopefully, with the other bills that will be coming up shortly that will finally complete what Customs and Quarantine needs to make sure that the mission mandates are kept in order. So in that effort, Mr. Speaker, I stand and rise in full support of this measure. And I humbly ask that the good senator from Talapofo also include me in the measure. Sisus Massey.
Thank you very much, ma'am. On the bill. On the bill. General Lady from Timuning, ma'am, you recognize?
Sisus Massey, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I stand in support of this legislation. You know, it's obviously, we need to extend this. There were circumstances that were surrounding the, you know, not being able to implement this. COVID, for instance, you know, delayed this completely with some reasons. We had Typhoon Marwa, you know, that came about. And, you know, circumstances like this is, you know, unforeseeable. And to have that flexibility extended is obviously something that we need to do. Even the Attorney General, you know, supports this bill as well. And he's been an advocate, you know, in trying to put more X-ray equipment. You know, he's been providing K9s to not just the Port Authority, but Customs, as well as other public safety. Even the DOC received K9s as well. So this, of course, is going to help, you know, with trying to find that where, while not trying to find, we all know that the issue of drugs being imported to our island through, whether through the port or through the mail or just, you know, any other way it's coming in through carrier of an individual. But this is so important that we need to stay on course and provide this additional time to allow them to put it together, considering the circumstances again. So I stand in support of this legislation. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, ma'am. On the bill. Any other senators wishing to speak on the bill? General Lady from Baragada, ma'am, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise in support of Bill number 183-38-COR as amended. This bill provides the Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency an additional two years until July 17, 2028, to complete the development of the long-planned customs satellite inspection, holding, and secured sterile facility in PD. Mr. Speaker, without this extension, the property would revert back to the government, setting this critical project back years and forcing Customs to restart its site authorization from the beginning. That's a lot of delay for a lot of work that has been in place already, Mr. Speaker. The agency has faced extraordinary delays beyond its control. The COVID-19 pandemic, super typhoon Marw, chronic understaffing, and the complexity of designing a modern inspection facility capable of handling cargo, contraband interdiction, and invasive species prevention. Despite these setbacks, Mr. Speaker, the agency has made real progress, securing a $2 million federal grant from the U.S. Maritime Administration for design and engineering, establishing the multi-agency container inspection facility working group, and coordinating with the port, DPW, and federal partners on layout, cargo flow, and long-term operations. Mr. Speaker, this facility is not optional. It is actually central to protecting our island from methamphetamine trafficking, weapon smuggling, and invasive species that threaten our agriculture and environment. Strengthening our inspection capacity is vital to public safety and directly tied to reducing drug importation and related crimes. The Port Authority likewise emphasized that this project is essential infrastructure for securing Guam's supply chain. So, Mr. Speaker, the legislature already recognized this need when it granted a previous extension in 2021. What this bill acknowledges is that the major enforcement infrastructure requires time, coordination, and resilience in the face of unexpected setbacks. The responsible path forward is to preserve the progress that has been made, not erase it by letting the authorization lapse. Mr. Speaker, for these reasons, I support Bill number 183. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, ma'am. On the bill. Any other senators wishing to speak on the bill? Senator, good senator from Jolene, you recognize, ma'am? General Lady, you recognize?
Sisus Massey. Of course, I rise in support of this bill, which is really just going to extend what we've given Customs the authority to do since 2018 for two more years. In 2018, Senator Tom Ada and his colleagues, including myself, gave this property to the port. And because it was necessary at the time, and the findings of that bill or that law were that entry points of invasive species that enter Guam via the Guam's ports of entry, most especially the commercial port of Guam, and that the most cost-effective strategy for combating invasive species is prevention. They said that in, this was in 2018, and they were citing 2010 findings by Department of Ag that said 73, at least 73 native organisms found at the port alone, which strongly indicates pathways via boat traffic. They found also that Warehouse Number 2 at the Port Authority in the past was designated sterile area at which freight held by Guam Customs was placed, inspected, and cleared by Guam Customs. Warehouse Number 2 has since been demolished, and there has been no suitable replacement area that has been mutually agreed upon by the port and Guam Customs that is centralized and has proprietary security and sterility for conducting efficient inspections and follow-up enforcement actions. That was in 2018. That was the big concern back then. And that was, the goal was to get a sterile area in place in three years. They gave a deadline, three years. Because everybody promised that that could be done in three years. That three years turned from 2018 to 21 to an extension from 21 to 2026, a five-year extension. Still not done. And now they're asking for two more years from 2026 to 2028, a two-year extension. And they gave us an update on their progress. So my question is, in the years since 2018 that we recognized that there was no sterile, suitable inspection facility for Customs at the port, has there been a temporary sterile inspection place for Customs set up? And if I could ask the sponsor if he would yield, if he knows the answer, or if the oversight chair would yield?
The sponsor, the oversight chair willing to yield to the question?
If not, we heard no testimony that there has been anything set up. And I think my discussions with Customs on other matters, I don't think there is one. And that is, of course, a huge issue. So of course, we want to give them the property to build an elaborate facility. But I can't understand why they could not set up something in the interim when we have gone so far beyond an invasive species crisis to the drug crisis. And to ignore that is so blatant- And to ignore that is so blatantly obtuse. And we asked them during one of the hearings, is it normal for a port or Customs at a port to find no drugs? Because they found no drugs in the last few years, none. And they said, no, they agreed, that's not normal. But why are we settling for that? The AG on one hand is asking for 100% inspections and demanded that if we are going to pass this bill, that we demand that, especially if they're given this new facility, but this bill was not amended to do that. But I'm asking for at least a temporary facility set up by the port and Customs to do some drug inspections, to get us some results, to show the people of Guam that we are not that ignorant, that they know better, to honor what they know, that they know we have a drug crisis, and can someone please respond to that by prioritizing the accommodation of Customs at the port, allowing them to do what they want and need to do, and assisting them in that regard, not in 2028, today? And I'd like to ask, so we're extending this now for two more years, and I want to ask if we believe that this construction is going to be done in two years, because it wasn't done in the three years or the five years, and now two more years? But my understanding from the public hearing is they've actually only discussed the A and E, architectural and engineering, and they, the public hearing was in September 2025, and they had just talked to DPW about doing the procurement of the A and E at that time. So I would ask the sponsor of the bill or the Oversight Chair or anyone who could yield, if we know if this can be completed by 2028, or are we going to be coming in here for another extension to get the construction completed? I think, seeing the A and E on, Simon Sanchez took a year, I think, a minimum. I just want to know what is their expectation? Thank you.
Are you willing to yield to the question?
I do, Mr. Speaker, and let me just be very frank, that we cannot guarantee that this could be done in that time, but I think that our, my colleague from Baragada made it pretty clear, and I thought it was very eloquent, that we have a lot of progress that's been happening. I mean, I just got here in January, and I went to a tour three months later, and now we're here in November, trying to find a way to allow this process. They have the money for the A and E. There is a commitment by them to move forward. Also, if I can, just to go back to the earlier question, you know, we are, the current inspection process involves sealed containers, Mr. Speaker, which cannot be opened without Customs clearance. There's onsite inspections at business locations islandwide, pre-arrival review of shipping items. We even toured there, where they get all the documents. I hope that's, Mr. Speaker, that can answer the question of the...
May I help you with your question?
Yes, well, in part, I still don't know whether there is a dedicated facility such as the, what used to be Warehouse Number Two for Customs to use that is sterile, safe, protected, so that they can inspect. And I've asked, again, in one of my lists sent to the OPA to audit these containers that are reported to Customs as open upon Customs getting there. And so I don't think, you know, I think there's much room for improvement, and I'm hoping Customs is going to get to the bottom of all of that as soon as possible and not wait. I don't want to think that they're waiting for completion of this facility to do inspections at the port. I certainly hope that, I know they are short, and we have tried to put more cycles of Customs officers, and we know they are short of K-9s that are very useful, and they're using them at the post office very effectively, and I want to congratulate them on that. But I just think we cannot go longer without hearing that we can find drugs where we know that they are also coming in. And I think for anyone to die that there's any coming in at the port would be very ignorant of us, because in every other port in the United States, that's what they do. They find them and try to stop them. So again, I support the Customs officers. I want a facility that will help them. I don't think that their work should depend on this facility. I think the port has to help them come up with another warehouse or something to do these inspections. They need to get to the bottom of why containers are open before Customs even arrives, and the opening of containers on the off-premise inspection sites prior to Customs' arrival as well. So I think Customs is going to work on that, and they've got their work cut out for them. But again, what we're looking at on the other side is so extreme. The amount of drugs coming into Guam, I think anyone conclude, and I think Customs concluded the same in the hearing when I asked them, is that usual, that we would not find any drugs at the port? And they said, no. So I want them to do that. I want to see that happen. I want everybody's cooperation, and I very much hope DPW will prioritize this and get this procurement done without protests for the A and E so that we can see what we're going to do with the construction. I know they talked about getting grants, and hopefully, if they get that 80% grant, we're going to get our share when we need to. But again, we want to see progress. I don't know, honestly, we had the typhoon and other things to delay us, but we're talking about A and E here. We just need a, we need a design. So we're relying now on DPW and the AG to review these contracts and procurement and get this done. And hopefully, yeah, we won't have to see another extension. Hopefully, this is prioritized. Sisus Masi, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. On the bill. Any other senators wishing to speak on the bill? On the bill, any other senators wishing to speak on the bill? No other senators wishing to speak? Gentlemen from Epen, sir.
Sisus Masi, Mr. Speaker, and good afternoon to the people of Guam. Thank you for watching our session. I want to rise in support of the bill if it's going to support the Customs and Quarantine Authority. As you know, Mr. Speaker, this issue of crystal methamphetamine and a flow of it into our island, we've failed, frankly, as a government to give Customs the tools it needs. And if you just track the data back in the heyday of Customs, when they had a, what I think the closest they could have been to, like, a fully manned department, and you track over the years, the more officers we've lost from Customs and Quarantine, the more drugs we have seen come into the island, the more drugs we have seen come into our families' houses, the more drugs we have seen ruin our people's lives. And so anything we can do to continue to support Customs and Quarantine, I think we have to do, you know, retention incentives, I think, is another good idea, giving them increased authority to go into areas and conduct inspections, even, you know, supporting Customs, something that just seems like maybe a little thing, but, you know, people filming in these secured areas where Customs officers are trying to do their job. Well, you know, that used to be absolutely uncalled for, and unfortunately, we've seen a couple of times where people go in and they're filming and, you know, degrading, insulting the officers, and it was allowed to slide. So that's one of the things the Customs officers that have approached me about this facility is they're looking for those, you know, increased authority for Customs, especially in areas where they should be the authority. And you know, the retiring speaker is very correct. I don't think anyone in this legislature is convinced there are no drugs coming in through the port. I think the only people who think there are no drugs coming in through the port is port management, you know. I interviewed Customs Director Paredo many years ago, and this was within the first couple of years of this administration, and he, on the record, said absolutely the drugs are coming in through the port, we just don't know how to catch it. And so while our Attorney General, I think, has planted this 100% container inspection, you know, idea out there, and we know just from asking Customs, nobody in the world does 100% container inspections, but I think what he's trying to do, and very successfully he's done, is make a point that, hey, if we're not going to do 100, how about 10%, you know, how about 5%? How about anything better than we are currently doing right now? Because, like I said, we have lost this war on drugs, and a lot of reason why we've lost this war is because, for whatever reason, the incentive, the motive, has not been there to strengthen our borders. You know, sadly, we haven't seen the support of Customs. We've even seen individuals who have been affiliated, arrested, charged with, you know, possession, dealing. Instead of these individuals being punished, we've seen them protected in many ways. So I want to support the bill if it's going to get Customs a little bit closer to where we should have been years ago, Mr. Speaker. And again, I thank you for the opportunity to rise and speak in support of the bill and to speak in support of our hard-working Customs Officers. Sisus Masi.
Sisus Masi, sir. On the bill, any other senators wishing to speak on the bill? Any other senators wishing to speak on the bill? No other senators? Senator Mutato, you can close, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker, and colleagues, for the discussion on Bill 183. Mr. Speaker, I want to specifically thank our colleague from Timuining, Senator Jesse Luhon, and his committee for working closely with my office to move Bill 183 through this process, including preparing the measure for today's session. And if it's proper, if I can add, Senator Jesse Luhon and Senator Tina Rose Munia Barnes to be co-authors or co-sponsors to this bill.
I'd love to, but...
You have form?
Where we have a standing rule, you have to be in the hall.
Okay, so... So can I add, then, Senator Sabrina Salas Matanani?
There she is. Now she walks in. Okay.
Okay, Senator Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Senator Sabrina Salas Matanani, Senator Shelley Cabo as well?
On the motion to add Senators Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Jesse Luhon, Shelley Cabo, and Sabrina Salas Matanani as co-sponsors to the legislation, are there any objections? No objections, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and I also want to extend my thanks, if I could, to the leadership of the Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency and the Port Authority of Guam, as well as our elected Attorney General for supporting this bill, and more importantly, for zeroing in on why this measure is critical for their work and the work of our other hard-working men and women of law enforcement or in our law enforcement community. If my colleagues, if you could bear with me for just a second, if it's okay, Mr. Speaker, I just wanted to read into the record, just if I can, a couple of the statements that were made in support of this. Let me start with our elected Attorney General, quote, "As the people's democratically-elected chief legal and law enforcement officer of Guam, my policy is both clear and uncompromising. We must achieve 100% inspection of all containers at the port. This alone will significantly cut Guam's crime rate." That from our Attorney General Doug Moylan. If I also can, Mr. Speaker, I just wanted to add this, if I could, from the Chief of Customs, Mr. Vince Perez. He said, quote, "While CQAs work diligently, the scope, cost, and federal compliance requirements of this project demand more time. This bill is not about delay, it is about ensuring that Guam finally establishes the customs inspection facility our island has needed for decades. Mr. Speaker, we as government leaders and security experts from all over the Pacific, they're worried that the maritime transportation system could be used by terrorists to smuggle personnel, weapons of mass destruction, or other dangerous materials into the United States. We as a community must be concerned that ships in U.S. ports like ours and others in the region, particularly large commercial cargo ships and cruise ships, could be compromised." So, Mr. Speaker, I thank you for the time, and I ask for my colleagues to join me in approving 183, and with that, I ask to place Bill 183 as amended by the Committee on Transportation, Tourism, Utilities, Customs, and Federal and Foreign Affairs, and further amended on the floor to the voting file.
On the motion to move Bill 183-38COR as amended by committee and further amended on the floor to the third reading, are there any objections? Hearing, no objection, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the time.
Colleagues, it is right now, it is almost 11, it's about 11:20, 12:23 right now. We're going to go take a break for lunch and be back at 2:00, but please recognize that we're going to move as quick as we can through that time, because at 5:00, we have to start to prepare for the state funeral, which is occurring tomorrow, and we will not have any session tomorrow and be back on Thursday, but we need to finish everything else before Friday at 3:00, okay, to meet some of our schedules. All right, so we're at recess until 2:00 p.m. today.